I'd like to convene the county council meeting of July the 24th. It will be led in the pledge of allegiance to the flag by Mr. Ed Carroll. County attorney.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Has the agenda been posted properly?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Mr. Matchit.
Present.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as posted, please.
So moved.
Second.
Hold up your papers, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. We want to the approval of the minutes of June 26th and July 2nd, which is actually the same meeting that had a recess in there. So I need a motion to approve June 26th and July 2nd.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Jessica. Roll call, please.
That was a special meeting?
Yes.
Special? Continuation.
Continuation, okay.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Upstaying.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Now we will move on to financial and transfer agenda, please. Ms. Patterson.
Public defender's office, excuse me, 185 transcripts fees, $30,000. Wainwright, 186 attorney fees, $75,000. Total request, $105,000.
Think she's got some changes, right?
I do have some changes. After I met with finance committee, I was able to, although we do have 10 trials that I discussed with the finance committee, that we are going to have to pay attorneys for, we're going to have to pay for transcripts, we're going to have to pay for appellate fees on the, for the attorneys. I was able to see, break down a little bit more of when these were actually going to have to be paid out. A couple of the transcript fees were not going to have to be paid out until after the first of the year. And a couple of the appeal fees were not going to be, have to be paid out until after the first of the year. Also, following the financial committee, we talked about doing some transfers later in order to shave some money off, and we talked about some specific accounts, and I said that I would attempt to do that. So after doing those shavings, we still will have other, trials that will have to be appealed. Those are $3,000 flat rates. We don't pay the attorney fees on, on the, extra attorney fees on those. So after that, I'm able to amend my request for attorney fees to $58,000, down from $75,000. Actually, I'm sorry, strike that. I would lower my request for attorney fees to $44,000 from $75,000.
Do I hear it correct?
And I spoke to Mr. Quakenbush. He gave me a few minutes, and I was very glad to explain and glad for his time. This is a big request. We just don't have the money. I gave you sheets that showed as of last year, at this time of the year, we have spent on attorney fees, we had spent, let's see, 100, well, we've spent $105,000 this year. As of this time last year, we'd only spent $59,000 on attorney fees. Our total attorney fees for last year were $82,000. So we're hoping this is just, you know, an anomaly. We, on transcripts, we at this point last year had spent $13,832. The whole year for transcripts, we spent $39,475. This year on transcripts already, we have spent $29,479. And we have all the trials and transcripts of which I've just described. So the transcripts I went through, I don't believe, in fact, I think I may have underestimated those a little bit. I hope not. But I, you know, I just can't lower that request at this, you know, at this point. If we end up having money, of course, I would transfer that over to, attorney fees would be the only place I would ever have to transfer, I would hope. All of our other accounts seem to be well-funded, and it's just those two line items where I'm problems with.
I need a motion to approve, what, $74,000? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll move to approve $74,000.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, there was not a determination by finance committee on this because we've asked her to kind of go back to work, and it looks like you've done that.
Bottom line, per our discussion, this will actually take $44,400 from the general fund if we get our 40%.
Correct.
Because you guaranteed me this would be a reimbursement right.
These are both reimbursable expenses from the state public defenders board. And as you know, from Ms. Anderson having to request money from, in her jury line item for jury trials, you know, this is all trickle-down. We, they've had a super amount of trials, we have trials still going, they've just ate up our funds.
Well, I think the other thing that you might explain to, and I'll get started on it, I guess, but these attorney fees are, are what the public defenders are paid in addition to their regular salary?
Correct.
Because these are murder?
Murder and L1 felonies.
Or, yeah.
They, after they complete that trial, whether it's, or complete that case, whether it's by guilty plea or by jury trial, they are entitled to extra compensation for their prep time and their trial time on those cases. So that's, when I say attorney fees, that's what I'm talking about, the conclusion on only the F1 or murder cases.
And I would just.
Felony one.
Correct.
I would just caution counsel, too, I mean, if we, there are 10 murder trials.
Scheduled.
Scheduled now, and if they go into next year, this is probably going to go into next year. So we may want to, I don't know what you put in for budget.
I asked for more than this year. I don't have that figure with me, but I did ask for more than we were granted for this year. I anticipate not having to ask for, especially in that attorney fee line, not having to ask again, and I'm afraid that, you know, I could be in here every month with more, probably penny accurate requests as far as what we spent that month. But the fact is, the court reporters aren't going to type these transcripts, you know, without getting paid. We just, we have to have the money. And I've tried to skim everywhere else. In fact, I completely cleared out a couple of different accounts that I anticipate clearing out for transfer in future months, just so that I could lower this amount.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you very much for communicating with us.
Thank you.
Doing your best to get it down good.
EMS capital improvements, 441. Medical supply lockers, $46,250. I think that should really say 4, I'm not sure.
448.
447, 8?
448.
Affordable sec.
Lockers is 447.
Okay.
Interrupt you, he's going to withdraw this.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're just going to withdraw our requests at this time, so we're trying to save some of that money back until closer to the end of the year, make sure we're okay. So we're holding off on those expenses for now.
That's it for tonight, folks?
Good.
Okay, the first transfer page, communication center, has all been withdrawn. Per Paul. Jail, 133 corporal, minus $740. E146 correction officer, plus $740. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Larry. Discussion?
Yeah, just for your information, we didn't see you guys at finance committee.
There was a scheduling and both meetings.
Okay, yeah.
So what, what is this?
It is a corporal that has been demoted down to a correctional officer, and they had longevity rolling that needed to follow.
Okay. That's interesting. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Sheriff, 194 sick pay, minus $213. 192 educational incentive, plus $213. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Jessica, second by Scott. I think this is to fulfill the negotiation of contract, is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Circuit court, 197 part-time, minus $1,930. D189 adult probation officer, plus $1,930. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Jessica, second by Scott. What, what was this discussion in finance? Sorry, I missed any.
Well, we've, we decided we were going to make her come here and discuss it with you guys. We didn't, we didn't.
This was some personnel changes that happened back in 2015. We reassigned some personnel in the adult probation department. We made the department unified. It used to be adult probation and juvenile probation, and they unified that department. When they unified that department, we decided to have one chief probation officer and two supervisors for those departments. The supervising probation officer never got filled at juvenile. Nobody stepped up, nobody wanted it. They finally have moved some personnel around, and they want a person to go out there and supervise to help with family recovery court, collection of fees, which are way down, and other things that need to happen out there. So along with that supervising probation position comes by the salary, the state salary ordinance for probation officers, there's a $5,000 raise for that position. So for this year, I had to transfer money to cover that, and then we put it into the budget for next year. But it was all approved in 15 when we changed those, the personnel around.
I think through our discussion in finance committee, the, the idea behind this is that they were going to increase the fees collected to offset.
Right.
This amount is the, is the goal.
Well, and, and if you look at the fee collection, I think for the year, they've only collected $760 this year, which is way below what they've been collecting previously, which won't even sustain their budget out there. Their budget's like $8,000, $8,500. So we have to do something to get that budget sustained, let alone other, other issues of personnel, that we just need somebody out there, a body out there, to take care of things, which never happened.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Public defender's office, 199 longevity, plus $2,900. 313 psychological testing, minus $2,900. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Scott, second by Jessica. Explanation? How does the finance committee do with this?
This was approved through finance committee.
Is this something you were assured on?
This, I'm transferring this because we had to add a few people to our, a few public defenders to our longevity line item in accordance with the 2019-Cerius Rule 5, and had to make sure that that was funded at, by the end of the year to go ahead and be able to pay everybody their correct longevity.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS, D138, minus $30,567.25. E138, plus $30,567.25. A123, minus $25,832.72. B123, plus $25,832.72. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Jessica.
We didn't see EMS in finance either on this one, so I can't tell you anything on this one other than it's transfer.
I think those are the transfers for the new employees.
Yep.
So I wasn't at finance, so I don't know what needs to be done.
Then you won't be able to answer my question.
I'll try.
Well, usually when you hire a new employee, the new employee comes in at a lesser wage rate and doesn't have longevity, and yet these are exactly equal amounts, I can't quite understand that. Were these people that haven't been there very long, or?
No, they, because we hired like seven new people in the last six weeks or so.
I know you have.
So we, I think they were just transferring what was left in the people that left, taking their lines into the new lines for those new people. I don't think, I don't think it affects their pay.
I think they're on base pays.
Yeah, it's all, it's just their base.
So the payroll clerk will be aware of this and not pay this amount?
Yeah, they'll still be stark on with the lower amounts, so there'll be money left over at the end.
Most people just transfer the whole balance.
I know they do. I'd rather them transfer what they need personally.
No, I wouldn't, but.
You wouldn't? Just for pokey being there? Okay.
It's going to stay there regardless of A or B, but it's easier to just transfer the total.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Auditor C104 Paymaster, minus $14,588.54. D104 Paymaster, plus $14,588.54. C112 insurance, minus $15,312.70. D112 insurance, plus $15,312.70. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Questions?
The rest of these on the agenda were all approved through finance committee.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Statewide 911, 195 holiday, plus $2,030. B103 supervisor, minus $530. 324 telephone, minus $1,500. Total request zero.
Would you want to go ahead and do the other two? Or community corrections?
Well, probably not.
Okay.
Because they're different departments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
You can do the next two.
Okay, community corrections. A137 case manager, minus $18,477. B137 case manager, plus $18,477. A137 case manager, minus $18,050.61. B137, plus $18,050.61. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Scott, second by Jessica. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
In eligible homestead, 310 contractual.
That's just up at the podium, I'm going to.
I have one question. Mitch Castle, I'm the director of Delaware County Community Corrections. I've got Robin Luda coming back for it next week as a part-time employee, and I would like to pay her more than the ordinance requires or allows per hour. She's a master's educated person, and she's going to be back working in the big show program, so I'd like to pay her $20 an hour.
That takes an amendment to the salary ordinance.
Do I need to come back?
Probably a job description. You'll have to work with Pam and Rick on that.
Deal well, please. Get on the finance meeting schedule for next month.
Very good, thank you.
In eligible homestead, 310 contractual services, minus $5,500. 442 equipment, plus $5,500. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Was there a heated discussion on this in finance?
I don't believe so. I don't know if we got into real specifics or not. I know there was some discussion on it, but if you want to hear the lowdown, Steve's here today.
Well, Steve gave me a little tour, and he's reorganized his office, and like, tell everybody what you did.
Well, some of this transfer is for, our computers have to be upgraded to Windows 10, the ones that run the GIS programming, and so this is going to start off as the flat room for computers in the flat room. And then it's buying a desk and a conference table and chairs for the back office, where we're actually going to have a conference room where either the council, whoever can come in, we actually can sit down and have someplace to lay stuff out and have a conference room. We've moved all the finance back to one office, so payroll, insurance, Donna, Gail, and Becky, they're all at one office.
Denise gets her old office back.
Yeah, Denise going back to her old office.
Hey, Steve, how, you know when those computers were replaced? Were those part of the big?
No.
They were before that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything has to be, anything that runs this program, Luke said, needs to be upgraded to Windows 10. And so we're going to start off with four, and then we're going to do everybody's that does the GIS mapping, all have to go to Windows 10.
Okay, well, and that was my concern when we did the major computer upgrade, that they weren't going with Windows 10, they were Windows 7, I think, so anyway.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, the first addendum I have is King Bridge.
Well, I have.
Okay. B111, minus $11,393.60. C111 payroll deputy, plus $11,393.60. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Jessica, second by Scott. Questions? This is where someone's leaving and being replaced, correct?
Yep. Yes.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, the next one I have is public defender.
I do, too.
And it should say B164, minus $13,926.92. And C164, plus $13,926.92.
Move to approve.
Second.
Scott, second by Jessica. This is just a replacement?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, next one I have is circuit court, A139, assistant court reporter, minus $12,235. B139, assistant court reporter, plus $12,235. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. I guess I got that one, so any question?
The, the first two that we've approved were heard by finance committee. I think this was, this was not, yeah, so.
This happened the day, day of finance. I was told the person was resigning, so I asked if I could put this in on this meeting so I could get the next person hired. So it's just a new hire. Will be a new hire. I currently have a job posted.
You're just, you're replacing?
I'm just replacing.
Replacing one, and is one moving from?
From our office to the prosecutor.
Okay. And there was a question in, and it looks like you've got it correct on here, I think, whether or not these would go to A-lines here. It looks like they have, so.
Yeah, it's going to change.
Got A and B lines, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
One more question. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Lowet Public Safety Prosecutor, 106 investigator, minus $13,263. A106 Deputy Prosecutor, $13,263. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
This was the one that we had. The publication of the, doesn't have any line items.
Say investigator, Donna, on that.
Huh?
It should say investigator. We got investigator and then prosecutor. It should just be investigator, investigator.
I was going to ask you that one.
That's my typo.
Okay.
This, this was the one where he.
I'm confused on the personal services, is that a A106?
Denise corrected it yesterday because there was nothing on there. It should say, let me see your.
Well, I didn't get it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, it got corrected to, A106 is minus the $13,263.
Okay.
And then, yeah, you got the new one. A1, A106 is investigator, plus $13,263.
How can it be two As?
No. First one is just 106.
Oh, I got you. I thought you said A1.
I probably did.
Okay.
And then, and the second one's A106.
Because I wrote it down.
And then, I just want to clarify this for Gail, because this has been a controversy. This new, this new A106 investigator is now the person being paid from the grant.
Oh, yeah, I need to correct.
Thank you. Before, it was a different line item that was being paid by the grant, and this, and now.
It says Lowet Public Safety.
Right, but they have a grant that pays for one.
And the only thing.
That we get reimbursed.
Yeah, and on our grant, it signifies who the employees are. On here, in the Lowet Public Safety prosecutor, it does not, because that's a reimbursable grant, and like Donna said, we talked.
Oh, okay, so you're just appropriating the money, then the grant will put it back?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. I can follow that.
I wanted to specify that the person that was being reimbursed for the grant is no longer, it's now this position. It's now this position.
That still makes me confused.
It was.
As long as you're happy.
We talked it through.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, a year, year or two ago, they got a grant.
I remember the grant.
And it, and it reimburses this position in the Lowet fund.
I understand, I just was a little confused because you said this position was now, was paid by the grant, now it's paid out of Lowet.
No, that's not what I said.
Or you say it the other way around?
There, there was a position, I'm just going to use a figure, 108. I don't know what the number was.
Okay.
And at the time that it was established, it was specified that that line item was the one that was reimbursed by the grant. Okay? Now that they, they have to hire a new person because somebody quit or moved, whatever. This position, 106A, is now the one that's specifically reimbursed by the grant. To me, it don't matter, but.
Okay.
Gail thought it did, so.
It's the person, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's fine, as long as you guys.
It doesn't matter to me. The grant money's going to go in the Lowet fund.
Bottom line is, is that the grant will reimburse Lowet. The only reason I was asking that is because I know when we discussed this grant, that it was specifically agreed that if the grant goes away, the job goes away.
Exactly. And so, that's why I wanted to make specific in this, that this is now the grant position instead of the previous one.
Okay. Very good. Roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I want to make sure you understand, on the grant, when I turn in a claim form, it has specific names on that grant. They may not be signified in our budget that way. But when I turn claims in to the grant manager, the names who are being paid by that grant are on there. Okay?
And now, those names are going to change because we've got a person in the position?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. I'm with you, just took a little while to get there.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenfish.
Yes.
I think that's all we got.
Y'all done?
I think so.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Moving for the famous.
Motion to approve financial transfers and amend the salary ordinance with light reductions.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Corrections or addendums? Roll call please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenfish.
Yes.
Moving into committee reports. Don't believe we have anything on tax abatement. Appointments. I will thank Ms. Piper. I understand the appointments she brought to us for the Housing Authority. The way it was expressed to me was she's a breath of fresh air. Thank you very much. I haven't met the person yet. Hopefully, she can come to one of our meetings and make you get a license. One of the members of the board's called me just to come in. They were happy to get that fulfilled. They've had a little problem with that particular position. We couldn't get somebody. Okay, personnel. I guess Pam took off, so. Go personnel. Now, Mr. Bookout and Mr. Walters are here to discuss regional redevelopment. We had previously discussed the, our membership with the East Central Indiana Regional Development Authority. Mr. Hughes has researched that and I've conversed with Mr. Bookout. Had that with an eight-year obligation and we're not sure we can even discuss whether we can remove ourselves or not. Do we want to discuss that a little bit before they start? I will take a presentation. Okay. Who right ahead, Dylan?
Morning, Council. Bill Walters, Director, ECI Regional Planning District. Thanks for your time on your agenda. There's been questions, as Ron just stated there. Not only that, but what has happened in ECI in the first six months, our projects, funding and all of that. So, we put together a little presentation here. And I'll have Brad walk you through that and then we'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Interrupt you for just a minute and explain to maybe those that aren't familiar. Bill is the Executive Director of the East Central Indiana Regional Planning District.
Correct.
And that has been in existence for many years.
Two thousand and nine.
So, this other that I mentioned came after that.
RDA was established in 2015.
So, this has been a very active organization for some time. And Bill's now the Director and he's going to bring us up to date to where he is on that.
Council, good morning. Brad Bookout prepared a brief, and I say that with a smile. A brief presentation to give you so we can understand what the difference is between regional organizations. Because no one understands, I think, except maybe Bill and I, what the makeup is of the different organizations. These organizations run on a shoestring budget. Bill is the sole employee of the ECI Regional Planning District. So, this is not a huge staff. There's not a lot of funding that comes in to fund these efforts. The funding that does come in to fund the efforts is thirty cents per capita. So, for every person in the county, the county commissioners contribute thirty cents from the ed funds to help fund his organization. In the region, the other counties also pledge, that are members, also pledge thirty cents per capita for their population as well. County like Blackford County that just joined, I think maybe that's, that $3,000?
Yes.
So, Blackford County's contribution is $3,000. So, it's not, not a lot of money. It's not a lot that you can do in Blackford County with $3,000. But we can lend some technical support or advice on different things. And so, we do do that. And this, we'll show you a little bit about what goes on. Of course, there's Bill as the Executive Director. This is the Executive Board. All of the different municipalities have one appointment. You have an appointment to this board. Your appointment is, is Ron, is your President, is Ron. This is the Executive Board. There's actually, how many members are on your full board, Bill? Twenty?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two on us full board, mostly all elected officials. Bill Hess in the upper right-hand corner, he's the President of the Board. He's also President of Hartford City, City Council. Marta Moody, we all know Marta, is the Vice President. The Treasurer is currently Michael Burton. Mike is the President of the Grant County Commissioners. Mayor Guzman from Portland, Indiana, Secretary. We all know James King, he's a member. And then, of course, Ron is a member. This is just the Executive Board. This is not the full board, just the Executive Board that meets. So, each municipality in the region, as I mentioned, gets one appointment. So, county commissioners get an appointment, you, the county council, get an appointment. All of the mayors in the region get an appointment, all the city councils, all the town boards, all the surveyor's office. I make this distinction on Bill's group versus the other group. This is the distinction. Bill's group is appointed by elected officials. So, that's, that's a key point. The other group is not appointed by elected officials. It is made up of the Lidos. The Lidos are the Local Economic Development Officials for the county. They make up the board of the other group. And that is, those Lidos are, I guess, endowed into that other group as, as members. So, this is your main group, is, is Bill's organization. Mission statement of Bill's group is to serve the regional local governments of East Central Indiana by fostering a regional vision for economic growth and prosperity. So, pretty simple, pretty broad, covers just about anything members need assistance with. Services to members annually, one of the big things that Bill's group does is serves as the organization that takes the elected officials on the annual Washington Fly-In Trip. This is a great trip. One of the commissioners usually attends on that. This year, we had Mayor Sean Byram of Winchester, Mayor Randy Guzman of Portland. Mayor Kathy Bans was committed to go, but then had an illness at the last minute. Grant County Commissioners usually always attend. Dan Ridenhour, Ridenhour from the Muncie City Council attended this year. And so, that's an excellent opportunity for them to meet their federal agencies that have different funding. Ron.
Chris went.
Chris went, yes, Chris went.
Just two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, so. And, and all of you or any of you are welcome to go every year. There's usually an announcement that goes out at some point. And at the meetings, we notify, Ron knows when those are. So, we'd love to have any of you attend at any time. There are seventeen federal agencies that have federal funding. This gives you an opportunity to, if there's a specific project that a commissioner or mayor is going after, looking after, gives them an opportunity to, to vet those different funding sources out. We also assist with technical assistance for, for projects, just knowing the ins and outs of how to, how to put a project together from dealing with, you see on there, brownfield technical assistance, how to do planning for your project, how to put together a financial plan for your project. We can assist with all of those different things. This talks again, annual Washington DC Fly-In. We meet with also Congressman Banks, Messer, Brooks, Carson, Senators Donnelly and Young. We go to the Department of Commerce, which is the EDA, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Army Corps of Engineers, USDA, and then the lobbying agency that, that we work with on specific projects is Merchant McIntyre. So, we visit with them as well. The other thing that Bill's organization does is maintains the comprehensive economic development strategy for the entire region. The members of his organization, we do do visioning sessions every few years in the different cities and towns in the area to gather projects that the communities would like to see take place or happen in those areas. Upper left-hand corner, you'll see that's Portland's new dream gateway project that they're working on. We've also identified in SEDS plans in the past, the shell buildings that we've worked on. Infrastructure in the lower left-hand corner, all the repaving of the roads in the South Muncie Industrial Center was a SEDS project. By being included in the SEDS, you're eligible for EDA funding. You're eligible for, for federal funding if it's included in that, in that plan. Otherwise, federal funding is, is more difficult. The federal government wants to see your plans in a local plan that's been certified by the regional organization in order to be eligible. So, that's why these are important to have this. We did, we have in the past worked on a lot of brownfield assessments and redevelopment projects. We, we secured two grants since 2012. Nearly 1.2 million dollars to do assessment work on brownfield properties. We've completed over fifty Phase One and Two environmental assessments in the region. Spurred nearly 22 million in new capital investment. We will reapply for this grant up to 600,000. It takes three coalition partners, so we have to have three, three regional partners to apply. We will, we will reapply in 2019 for a third assessment grant. So, most of the brownfield sites that you see around Delaware County, we have the files. We know what the environmental contamination is at those sites. So, if there is a developer, somebody who wants to look at that site, chances are, we have the booklet that has the, that denotes where the contamination is, what it is. In some cases, we can assist with trying to find dollars to do cleanup work. A lot of it, those owners of that contamination are individually responsible for it. And so, there's not a lot we can do unless somebody just really wants that site. But just knowing what the contamination is, is a major hurdle to getting redevelopment done. Because until you know, nothing's going to happen at the site. Some of the notable brownfield reassessment projects, Villages of Van Cleve, which is a senior housing project in Hartford City. TLS by Design is a furniture manufacturer in Portland that we worked on. Everything in downtown Delville, all the properties in that, that area there that you know that's ongoing. Cornerstone Park at the corner of Madison and Main in Muncie, where the old Holiday Cleaners was. The Barkin Cow location in downtown Gaston. So, just a few of the ones that, that we've worked on. Best practices of the, the Planning District is to introduce member cities and towns and counties to different opportunities from crowdfunding, residential developers, brownfield consultants, USDA, EDA, EPA, Indiana Department of Environmental Management, the whole list. We have contacts at all of those agencies and can, can connect for different projects. One of the big things that the Regional Planning District worked on a few years ago was the Investing and Manufacturing Communities Partnership. The Economic Development Administration awarded $300,000. Where there was a match of each of the member cities of Muncie, Newcastle and Anderson to each to make a plan of, to help revitalize after the demise of the auto industry. Out of that plan came the Anderson Purdue Polytechnic Center. That was one of the main, main projects of the plan. Newcastle Downtown Redevelopment was a main one. And Muncie's Downtown Riverfront Project was also another main project that came out of that plan. So, those things were spurred by that, by that grant. I-69 Economic Impact Study, this is a big one that has come out of the SEDS plan that we've been working on. The impact of I-69 on our region is significant. I've talked to you before about the need to help promote the intersections, bless you, on I-69. We have a pending application right now that says USDA, that should say EDA, for 150,000 dollars. The purpose of the study, of the Economic Impact Study, is to determine the amount of, of impact financially of goods and services in and out of both Delaware and Grant Counties. Everything we, we have, from our clothes to our car, to our house, my computer, it came in on a truck. We want to know what the annual value of that, those goods and services coming into our communities is on an annual basis and what the value of those goods and services that are leaving our communities on I-69 are on an annual basis. We think that number is significant and we should share that number with the federal government in hopes to secure more money to continuing the widening of I-69. We'd like to see six lanes through Delaware County, all the way through Grant County on I-69. But we have to make that argument with an Economic Impact Study and we're working on that now. So, that's what Bill's organization does. And I'm happy to answer any questions. But the next slide then is regarding the other regional group. And I don't speak for the other, other regional group. I have no authority to speak on their behalf and I'm not speaking on them. But I want to make the distinction between the other regional group and the East Central Indiana Regional Planning District. So, the names of the groups are very similar. Bill's is the Regional Planning District. This one is, the other one is the Regional Partnership. To Bill's credit, he had his name first. So, but the names are so alike, it is very confusing to a lot of people. The members of the other group are the members, are the Local Economic Development Officials, the Lidos, from the, the member counties. Their efforts focus largely on marketing the region for economic development projects. So, they're, they're economic development based, not necessarily planning, as much planning as they are economic development. They're currently undertaking though, an update of a regional plan that their organization has, which is overseen by the Regional Development Authority. That's the RDA Board, of which you, the county council, passed an ordinance to establish a few years back. That RDA Board is overseen by five members currently. I am one of those members at this time. I'm appointed by the county council. There, I've attended meetings. The state IEDC has awarded 150,000 dollars to that RDA Board to update that regional plan. That is in process now. I have had some limited communications with adding projects to that plan. I personally wish that that plan more involved you and the elected officials in this county. And I know they're making some efforts to try to do that. And I'm anxious to see where that goes. I know that there's a pending, you've considered dropping your membership from that organization. And thirty days ago, I probably would have encouraged you to do that. Since that time, I see some more efforts on their part to try to craft this plan. And I, I would encourage you at this time to stay the course, at least stay in there for maybe another six months and see where this plan goes. The state's been gracious to award 150,000 dollars to the organization. And I think we ought to vet that out. I hate for you to drop and pull the rug out from under the, the IEDC, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation at this time. It is your decision. I, I, I serve at your pleasure and I will continue to do that. But that is the difference between the two organizations. I will tell you that there is, the other organization sees Bill and I a little adversarial. We are kind of a disruptive technology for what they're trying to do at times. We do do a lot of projects in this county. We present those to you annually. We are. We do present everything we do. We're an open book. We present that to you, we share with you. I try to have very good communication with all of you. I invite you on projects, I come to your meetings. We make sure that we have good cross-communication. And anyways, I'll. And anyways, I'll leave my comments at that, so.
If I would, before you comment, I wanted to share my sentiments with Brad. I agree wholeheartedly that we let this play out, if you would. I have had recent contact, even though I was not invited to the original meetings, have had contact from the consultant as far as projects for the region, and overseeing of that, some of that, and some input in that. So I agree with Brad's comments. 30 days ago, I probably would have advised a pull-out, but now that we have been able to see some of the SEDS that we have worked on and maintained for years is included, and they have asked for updates from us, so I think it would behoove us to see what comes out of that planning.
What originally prompted this discussion was the fact that that organization was encouraging members of your organization to join them and resign from your organization. Is that not correct?
That would be correct, but...
Well, enough said.
Agree. We're trying to do the best for the county, for the region. Regionalism is here. It is difficult to get it going. Everybody wants to hold on to their turf. As you guys know, as a council that takes care of budgeting deals, money is tighter and tighter, so we're working over a larger demographic area and trying to accomplish some of the same tasks. Not everybody has stepped on the bus, as I've yet to say.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you, guys. Just one question if I might. So the East Central Indiana Regional Partnership is what was originally the East Central Indiana Regional Development Authority?
It was energized ECI, East Central Indiana Regional Partnership. It was both marketing and a planning district in its infant stage.
The organization that the council approved membership in in 2015 was called East Central Indiana Regional Development Authority.
That's the RDA.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's the RDA.
That's the RDA, Regional Development Authority. That was set up under the guidelines of the state, correct?
That's the board that's overseeing the current grant that I just mentioned of $150,000 from the state.
That is totally separate from the other two.
Oh, it is?
It's...
Well, it's affiliated with the Lido organization.
Yes.
Yes, yes. They do not recognize Bill and I, they do not recognize our economic development efforts.
I have been sitting in on meetings from time to time since the 80s, when I was a Commissioner, about regionalization, and what you say, Bill, is true. It's difficult when you get these people in a room, and they're turfs. I know we had to put the CETA program to bed when I was the prevailing officer in this region, and I had to close that out and start the new Job Training Act, and I had to bring all the mayors and the commissioners together. It was a regional effort. It's now controlled by the state, but it is difficult. It's very difficult.
It is, and some of you, I know, Jane, Ron, Chris, you've been in our meetings. You understand the importance of elected officials, no matter where you are or what side of the party line you're on, to get together in a room and discuss the problems that are going on within the region, come up with answers, best practices, that saves you time, gets you to what you need to accomplish. I mean, it's priceless, but you just can't get everybody, I mean, it's, like I said, it's a turf thing, and we just need to break those walls down. But we have accomplished a lot of good things out of those meetings since 2009.
It is common with regional organizations for members to come and go as elected officials in the region change, and some are familiar and understand the process, some are not, and so it does ebb and flow. Delaware County has been a consistent member of Bill's organization since inception, and I think all of the commissioners over that period of time since inception have appreciated the organization, so.
That was one of the things that I was impressed with, that whatever area it was, was developing, the surrounding areas or the other communities were in support of that. And that's good to see when that doesn't happen a lot.
Yeah. I can tell you, meetings, Grant County Commissioners have learned things from Delaware County Commissioners. The mayor of Portland has learned things from the town of Delville. I mean, there's cross-collaboration there. They meet quarterly, so it's not a constant meeting. It's optional to attend the meetings, but we always appreciate having, and you, the county council, you've always had an appointment, who's always showing up to the meetings, so we very much appreciate that. It's nice to have good attendance.
Couple more questions. On the Regional Development Authority, does Delaware County have a financial obligation to them?
They do not. Nope.
And as you also comment on the partnership, and also the bylaws of the authority, it says that a member of the Board of Directors may not be an elected official. Delaware County have any representation on the Authority Board of Directors?
Currently, the Delaware County Commissioners have appointed myself, John Brook, and also Tricia Stanley.
On the Authority?
On the Authority Board, yeah. There's no elected officials on the Authority Board.
There are no elected officials.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the updates.
Hope that brings a little clarity.
And Brad has complimented this council to me about how we, I guess I'll say, we listen and work with his group, and when I became President, Chris had been President, attended these meetings, I couldn't go to that Fly-In, and Chris took my place, and I really appreciated that, because we still had representation. It was across political lines, no lines there, you know? We just blended. So, and your goals have changed also from the past. They're not, you're not looking for ways to throw money at people.
Correct.
From out of town, we'll say, but they're still working for people out of the country.
Right, yeah.
We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Ordinances, I will point out, I asked Denise to put the ordinance amending the communications pace schedule for part-time in the folder, because we'd made some changes to it, and I'd rather have signatures on a clean copy than one that was penciled in. So that's in here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So one, the other council members know why that was in there again. Other new business? Audience comments?
Hi, good morning. Molly Hunt, Delaware County Purdue Extension, County Extension Director. I just wanted to take this opportunity and thank the Delaware County Council for their support of the 4H Fair. A few weeks ago, we know that 4H grows true leaders for the future of our county, and I wanted to extend a formal invitation to everyone to attend the Indiana State Fair August 13th through 19th, where we are proud to have over 125 projects being displayed at the Indiana State Fair for state judging, with over 30 livestock going as well. So please join us and see the great work of the youth of Delaware County. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Presidents' remarks. I recently received a newsletter from the Historical Society. Interesting article in there. One of the very first motorhomes ever built was built in Yorktown, Indiana, in the 20s by a Yorktown, Indiana banker, took his family on a trip, 10,000 miles, and their house on wheels. Home was constructed on a Rio chassis speedwagon, 15 feet long, 6 and 1/2 feet wide, weighed 5,340 pounds, got 12 mile to the gallon, top speed of 50 mile per hour. I love that was an interesting article, just bringing it up. See, we were innovators back in those days. Anyone else?
Ron, they didn't, they didn't try and induct you, did they? Didn't let that one go, sorry.
That's a good, that's a good. As you guys know, I like to tease, I don't mind being teased, that's fine. My old grandpa always told me, if they quit teasing you, they don't like you anymore. It's always a compliment to be teased. Well, with that...
I just, I want to make sure all the council heard me say that the budget books were missing pages, and I had to send them back, so as soon as I get them back, I'll email you, and you'll have to come pick them up. Sorry, my intention was to bring them up today, but...
Have them today, yeah, it's been great.
I'm just glad I checked the pages last night, so.
I've got two meetings after this meeting with the Department of Commerce to discuss their budgets, so...
Oh, I know, I did want to tell you that you appointed me to the, what's the name of that work?
Public Center Authority?
Yeah. And I was contacted by Gayden L. last month, and she told me that it would be like a training or, so I have yet to have any contact with anybody, so I'm going to be going into this meeting next month, totally blind. I know nothing, so just wanted to let me have...
Scott will be there to help you along.
I keep waiting on her to tell me when we're all going to get together and have like a pre-training for the new people, but...
They'll do it. You'll be okay.
You also, yeah, you also need to do a oath of office, and you can do that down at the clerk's office and stuff. It's pretty official.
I just wanted to know, just want you guys to know that I'm waiting...
I'll be meeting with you prior to that, because I don't want you coming in the same way I did.
Yeah, totally don't know nothing, so.
I was in your shoes.
Just wanted to report that.
I was in your shoes one time. You just go and, at least Scott had me to talk a little bit to before he hit the door, but I figured he'd be your mentor.
Good.
And I appreciate it. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Chris.
Outside of this, I just want to say thank you to everyone for kind words, thoughts, and prayers.
Okay.
Remember my family.
You're welcome.
During my mom's passing, and we've got a big, beautiful plan at home. You guys are very thoughtful. Thank you very much, it means a lot. Thank you.
It's just because I'm a grandfather for the...
Yeah, I was going to say that. And he got to the fair, and he made the comment that it kind of helped him with the loss of his mom, to get a brand-new, had the words from Chris, and he's perfect.
Of course he is, huh?
I thought that was interesting. Because they're always, you see the grandfathers counting their toes and stuff when they're born, you know? It's interesting how we are in our lives and human beings. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
For your comments. Okay, a little motion to adjourn.
I will.
All those favors say aye?
Aye.
All those say the sign? You are adjourned.